Good evening. Glad you're all here. Just a couple of things I want to announce before I turn it over to Rick to talk about the budget and the questions that we received on the budget. And actually, on that note, you'll note that there are some cards on the chairs. Another way to ask questions is just to draw it down and the card will collect the cards and we'll pass the cards on to Rick during the session. What I really want to talk about to begin with is volunteers and volunteer. Rick, today, spent the entire day, and yesterday, and probably a few others, at the time, before this meeting, preparing for this meeting. He's a volunteer. He's committed to the community. That's why he does it. Gwen is sitting in the back, okay? And frankly, in case you don't know, she's a Miss Volunteer, just put her name. Okay? We have a table there for the first time on one of these things. You want to know more about volunteering? Okay? If you're interested in what happens here or in anything else, talk to Gwen after the meeting. We can always use more volunteers here at Ford's Colony. Another big way that we end up with volunteers is on the board. I've asked my wife about how much she appreciates how much time I volunteer. You'll also know she's not here, but she's already heard all of this. Okay? Board volunteers, committee chairs volunteer, committee members volunteer, et cetera. Well, we're on the cusp of probably one of the biggest volunteer efforts, if you will, during any year, is that we're coming up on the board elections for 2024. And with that, I'm going to announce the candidates for the three slots that will be open in 2024. The first is Joanne Gorah. She's here. Second is Ray McCaskey. I think he's someplace in his camper. The third is Gary Porter, and I know that Gary is out of town. You know, they're putting into something that's going to require a lot of effort, and we should really appreciate everything that they do. They all bring a lot of experience and skills which will be very useful on the board. So, to start this meeting, I want to thank the four of them for stepping up. So let's just get the water on. Now, for the guy who has really stepped up on the last couple of days, I'll turn this over to Rick or Treger.
Thank you for the introduction. And I'm actually tall enough so that I don't have to pull this down. And if I'm coughing and checking, it's allergies, it's not COVID yet. Although, I do wear masks most of the time when I'm out in large crowds. Okay. To start this off, I wanted to just comment that we answered a lot of the questions, but we'll talk about those tonight. I didn't answer them all by myself. I had Sally, and Ryan, and Drew providing answers, as well as some of the folks on the board helping me out with these. So this was a group effort to put the answers to these questions together. And as you said at the end of the meeting, or at the end of this, so we have an opportunity to ask questions. And if you would use those cards, that would be helpful. Okay. Thanks, Joanne. All right, let's go to the first one. So, just a little bit of background and to explain, you know, where the board's mind was while we did this. Now, our goal last spring, when we put the guidance together, was to minimize the budget increases and thus minimize assessments. Assessments were last from '21 to '22 with 6.5% increase, from '22 to '23 with 7.8% increase. That was all associated with really high inflation rates that were a result of disruption of the economy coming out of COVID. So that was a major sensitivity for the board this time. But that had to be consistent with a number of other considerations. First of all, we had to address the critical requirements, whether it was infrastructure or something else in the colony, we had to make sure that that was taken care of. Second, we wanted to make sure that we maintained our current infrastructure for the continued some critical someplace down the road. And then, certainly, the looking field of Ford's Colony and the resident safety and security, which are two of the highest rated things in the annual service. And then finally, our overall goal was really to ensure that Ford's Colony remains a premier resident county. So, these are the key takeaways from the budget. I'm not going to go back to the budget unless somebody wants to dig into it at the end. We saw a significant, we were looking at a significant increase in revenue for 2024, something like $330,000. That comes from several sources that are spelled out in the budget presentation in detail. We asked the Finance Committee to look at, is this a, is this a, is this a just a one-time bump, or is this something we can expect to continue going up? And what they came back with was, yes, we see a higher level of revenue coming to the colony in the future years, and that kind of also comes from a number of slots, which we can talk about later if somebody wants to. The rate of inflation has been dropping. It's gone down to three and a half, about roughly three and a half percent at this point. And for future years, the projections at this time are that it will continue to lower with, probably not back to where it was in '15, '16, '17, but it will be, it will be lower than what we'd experienced the last few years. The result of all of that was a budget shortfall that was really minimal. It was about, I think it was $118,000, something like that. But then, the proposed assessment increase coming out of that is $10 per quarter of 1.77. So it's a relatively, relatively small spend increase. So let's go to the questions and answers. So the first question was that I appreciate, appreciate the availability of the Point One Court budget presentation online. Can you provide a copy? We did that. Sally, did that go out in what's happening with the colony? Or? In any case, there is, the budget presentation slides are out there online. That's the link. If you, if you have a problem with that, I'm sure Sally will be able to help you. So the next question. What are the developmental, what are the development-related revenues associated with the Country Club Villas, and what expense will be incurred by the HOA? What is the nature of the agreement? This is a long answer. So, the purchaser's handbook is supplemental and supplement for multifamily construction, which is also available on the website. Describe various fees associated with construction for its colony. These include construction impact fees and architectural review fees. Country Club Villas is a 37-unit townhome development, which will be under construction during 2024. The amount of fees related to Country Club Villas is proportionate to the size and complexity of the development. The construction impact fee offsets additional wear and tear on our roads. Basically, that's what it's for. The architectural review fee is used to fund the multiple inspections and reviews required during construction. In the case of Country Club Villas, just due to its size and complexity, there has been some consideration, I'm not sure what the final outcome will be, but it may actually be done by an outside contractor as opposed to volunteers. Okay. The FCHOA will own and maintain the road serving the 37 units. The condo association, and they will have their own condo association, will maintain the ground sidewalks and driveways. The developer will convey the existing parking lot currently under easement to Marriott, to the FCHOA. The parking lot will not be used by the condo association. I'll explain why in a moment. The developer will also convey the existing tennis and multi-use courts currently under lease to Marriott until December 2032 to the HOA. Developer will install fencing to match the existing fencing to separate Eagle's Flit condo parcel, as well as make the Eagle's Flit parking lot improvements. That piece of property actually belonged to the Ford family. Continued, they owned it. The developer bought the property from, from the Ford family. That piece of property included portions, or some significant portion of the Marriott parking lots, as well as the courts that you see there. So, the developer purchased that land, but there was this agreement with Marriott where they can use those until 2032. What the developer agreed with the HOA to do is actually convey those to the HOA so that they're not part of his property, they will be just given to the HOA. This question was asked several times. What is the large, in different ways, what is the large increase in the budget for Ford's Colony Drive and why? Okay, the explanation. The FCHOA assumed Brian Ford's 10% share of the Ford's Colony Drive maintenance costs in return for the transfer of two Ford's Colony Drive, the 3.5 acre vacant lot, the vacant parcel on the left-hand side of Ford's Colony Drive along Long Hill Road. I pulled this off the JCC real estate page and just did a cut and paste here. This is Long Hill, this is Ford's Colony Drive. So, when you're coming in, all of that property along Ford's Colony Drive, almost up to John Pot, actually belonged to Brian Ford. And it was zoned such that a commercial property like a Lala could have been put there. So, it was the HOA's intent here was to make, to grab that piece of property from Brian, belongs to the HOA, and we can now ensure that nothing like a Lala will ever go there. And Brian loves acting, so that was my understanding. By acquiring, well, I've talked about the middle part of this. The HOA will also benefit from the, from the use of the well and water and electricity located on the Ford parcel. And we also have now architectural control over the one Ford's Colony Drive property that Brian still owns on the other side of the street. That's where the real estate building is, and that was separate from Ford's Colony previously. We had no control over the architectural, looking field of that property, now we do. So, as a result of that, the maintenance costs associated with Ford's Colony Drive are currently shared among Ford's Colony Country Club, 30%, Marriott, 30%, and the FCHOA now 40% instead of the previous 30%. Technology also shows a large percentage change. What are we getting for this increase? Well, slightly half, less than half of the increase in the 2024 technology budget is a result of the realignment of IT-related expenses from security, from the security budget, is mainly IT-associated systems associated with Ford's Colony entry gates to technology. This is part of the FCHOA initiative to identify and align all IT-related expenses under technology to better track and manage these expenses. Over the past several years, our IT infrastructure has grown significantly. And that's just, that's just to keep up with the changes in modern technology and take advantage of it. So it behooves us to know where those, where that money is being spent so that we can better manage and control it. This, the remainder is an increase, of the increases for the hire of a new IT, for a new IT hire. The IT administrator will perform tasks to ensure operational efficiency and security of the FCHOIT assets, tasks which are now performed by contractors, MA managers, as collateral duties, or in some cases even volunteers. For instance, Andy Delbeck, I'm sorry, Andy Reho, yeah, his email is Delbeck, sorry. Andy Reho has actually had, this last year, gone out several times to, now Speeders won't like this, but to fix the speed trailer, the speed sign trailer for security. And so he did that as a volunteer, spending a number of hours troubleshooting and fixing that this new IT hire would do that sort of work. The realignment of IT-related functions from security budget to IT, combined with RPM IT-related functions, all of which will be assigned, the new IT hire will offset almost all of the salary expense. The second question with regard to IT was, the new IT hire would appear to be a full-time person. Was there any thought to this person being part-time and why not? Several months ago, the Technology Committee, Andy Reho and Jennifer, and I think a couple of other people, actually went through great detail. And when I say great detail, I mean list of tasks, number of hours per month that those tasks would take up. And as a result of that, this analysis that they did, it was, it was found that there were certainly more than sufficient hours to make this a full-time position. And so that was, that's the answer to that question. What was the, now we get a few easier ones. What was the cost to the HOA to install the pickleball courts? Well, that was done in two phases in 2019 and 2020. The cost was $43,105. What was the cost to the HOA to install pickleball sound panels? That was voted on by the board last year, but it was actually accomplished this year, and the expense was $57,500. How much did the HOA spend to build bocce ball courts? This was done in 2020, and it was $45,200. And then I combined two questions, this, who pays for maintenance and repairs for this? And this is an answer to, really, not just the ball courts, but all of the FCHO amenities. Maintenance costs of all amenities, such as swimming pools, various athletic courts, tennis, pickleball, basketball, and bocce, are included in the FCHO budget. The 2024 maintenance budget for pickleball courts is $555. In the case of the bocce ball courts, the FCHO hasn't spent anything on maintenance since they were installed in 2020, although the staff does periodically blow away these old courts. What will be the total operating cost of the two pools in 2024? Please include management labor and supply costs. Sally did that this afternoon. We went through the budget. It's, it's there, it's very clear. The total cost for those two pools, when you took that, all expenses, was $155,549. How much did it cost to renovate the community exercise studio? The cost was $52,349. Renovation included replacement of floor, flooring, construction of a new entry foyer for club storage space and personal garments, construction of the new front corridor, and payment. What are the terms of the CSB mortgage? As of 2021, and this, the mortgage was, I think you said it was restated? Okay? The CSB mortgage has a fixed rate of 3.85%. The balance is $581,865 after the October payment, and the loan will be repaid by the end of December 20, 2031. It's about $5,000 a month is what's being paid. In 2020, in the 2024 budget, what projects are approved and scheduled for 2024, and the amount of dollars associated with each project? So I listed these. The, the total was $89,500. The installation of irrigation along a portion of St. Andrews from Broadway to Marriott on both sides of the road. And this will facilitate, this will also facilitate future extension of that irrigation further along St. Andrews. But the cost, the initial request was, I think, $39,000 to actually do more work. The final number was $17,000 for a limited, a more limited project. Purchase of a foresting water attachment for the existing excavator, 22-5. The FCHOA currently spends about $7,000 per year on a contract to conduct this work. And this is used to cut high vegetation around, around ponds, around the various dams in the area, and to, you know, mulch up brush piles. So, this, this will advertise, you know, this will advertise itself in three or four years. So, and it has a life, I think, I forget the life exactly, but I think it's 25 or 30 years for this, is the expected lifetime for the mulcher. The trash bin at Westbury Park was $5,500. This, I think, was a holdover from last year. Apparently, the current, and I don't go to Westbury that often, but currently, the trash bin setup is, was described as unsightly, plus which it all is running away that there's a foul order odor that comes down the sidewalk. So, do you want to comment? There was a softball umbrella and a pickleball umbrella. The softball umbrella was a permanent installation, that was $3,500. The pickleball umbrella is two, it was $2,000. The pickleball club is going to buy a second umbrella at their own expense for $2,000. This is because in those areas, there really isn't any shade, so for the folks, the teams playing softball, and for the pickleball players, this will help them out when they're sitting on the sidewalk. The new IT hire, we've talked about that, was $37,000. We talked about the details of this, and as it says here, you know, he's going to do things other than just IT, but he's also going to take over streetlight repairs, assist with irrigation repairs, repair of gates and cameras for what contractor costs, as well as numerous other tasks. So the fellow they found apparently is quite good, older gentleman, not as old as me, but he's very skilled and he's got a wide range of capabilities, and so he looks like he's going to be an excellent hire for the community. And by the way, it's a hire by RCS, not by the HOA. And then there were five surge protectors for the gate cameras. That was $2,000. The original cost was $4,000, but the new IT hire is the one that's going to install them, which cut that expense in half. The idea here is that we have cameras at all the gates, and I don't know, would I be wrong if I said 70 cameras total around the colony? Drew?
Zero.
Yeah. I think that was, it was quite a few. Yeah, Brian's nodding. I believe that was the number I saw in one of Andy's documents. In any case, these cameras at the gates, if there's a lightning strike nearby, it tends to blow these cameras. So the surge protectors will help us protect those cameras and reduce that expense longer term. Was any group or committee able to reduce their budget by 5%, the 5% that the board requested? When the board, in the background, when the board did the budget guidance last spring, I guess we gave it to Finance in June, we asked them to consider two things. One, a 5% reduction in the expenses associated with the various line items with their area, and also their recommendations. They did that, the board looked at them, and all the committees provided the recommendations to reduce the budget by 5% as requested. During the budget review process, Finance's Committee and the board agreed that the impact of taking a 5% reduction wasn't feasible if we want to maintain the looking field of Ford's Colony. There's not a lot of, there's not a lot of fat in the budget. Most of the money in the budget goes for the work that's done to maintain the Ford's Colony infrastructure and for security and administration. Next question. How much money is budgeted for projects put forth by the landscape design subcommittee, and from what budget line does the money come? Please include all renewal and new projects that were approved. The LDSC funding is $33,500 that's included in the 24 proposed budget. The line, landscape improvement line, that number, and all 11 projects are replacement slash renovation projects. Healthcare costs nationwide, and specifically in Virginia, were reported, excuse me one second. The 12% increase in group insurance, I'm sorry. Healthcare costs nationwide, specifically in Virginia, were reported to only be increasing by an average of 7%. Wire for Ford's Colony increases at 12%. 12% increase in group insurance is staff recommendation based on industry, transgroup size, and experience. The FCHOA insurance agent provided guidance in September and will provide an insurance quote in mid-November. As in the past, a competitive bid process may be required if the current carrier's quotes seems unreasonable. Open enrollment through December, as well as new hires throughout the year, can affect actual expenses. Roy and I talked about this when, actually did a little research, and the numbers we teamed up were more like eight and a half to 10% projected increases. So we'll, we'll see what that number comes out to be actually in mid-November. Where in the operations budget is the cost for the planings replacing Western Gales fence? Shrubs have always been an operations cost. If they will now become a CRRM, a capital reserve replacement model, cost, how will all the locations, such as the main guardhouse, be retrofitted into the CRRM budget? So, the replacement of the subject section of the visual screen of landscaping and removal of fence between Spring Hill and Western Gales is funded in the capital reserve portion of the 2024 budget. The general landscaping will continue to be funded in the operation portion of that budget. Since one half of the Western Gales fence is scheduled to be removed in 2024, that fence is a CRRM listed asset, will there be an adjustment in the CRRM numbers for the remaining fence so that they are appropriate to the approximate of 550 remaining feet of fence, which would lower the monetary value savings assessment for the remaining fence? Western Gales fence CRM line was updated for this portion of the fence during the budget process. The CRM line will be further revised and adjusted based on the results of the 2024 reserve study and the RPM CRM adjustments. So there were a couple of questions about the FCHOA agreement with Glow Fiber and the installation by Glow Fiber of an additional conduit for FCHO streetlight wiring. So, the FCHOA granted Glow Fiber permission to install conduit with fiber optic cable throughout Ford's Colony. This installation is being done wholly at Glow Fiber's expense. When the streetlights were originally installed in Ford's Colony, the developer buried air electrical wire along them right away. After, the repair of this aging wiring cost the FCHA roughly $45,000 per year. The HOA often installs conduit when replacing streetlight wire. Glow Fiber agreed to install an additional third conduit for streetlight wiring at the same time they are laying their fiber optic cable conduit. It's anticipated that the expense of future repairs will be significantly less utilizing the newly installed conduit to replace streetlight wire. The cost association with having Glow Fiber do this installation at the same time they install the fiber optic conduit is 15 to 17 times less than installing it separately, meaning if we've gone out and had a contract to do this, or if we've done it piece by piece, it would cost me, each way, quite a bit more to get this work done. Payment to Glow Fiber is for the installation of the FCHO streetlight conduit. No funding, this was a separate question, but it's No funding, this was a separate question, but it's really a related answer. No funding has been spent to date. Per our agreement with Glow Fiber, they are installing conduit in selected areas for use when future streetlight wire failures occur. We will pay Glow Fiber $1.04 per linear foot of conduit installed, not to exceed 250K total in late October 2024 for this work. The streetlight CRM line will be adjusted during the 2024 reserve study and CRM update. The CPO contribution fee this year, we've taken about $190,000 between the beginning of October 2022 and September, and the end of September this year. We will continue to collect the CPO contribution fee through 2023, from October 2023 to end of September 2024. And we'll have more than enough money in that fund to cover the Glow Fiber work. I'll make the point here that none of the CCF money was included in the revenue calculations or the budget. So that was set aside, that was taken aside earmarked for Glow Fiber. So the budget discussion does not include the CCF. In other words, the 330K increase in revenue this year that I talked about doesn't include any CCF money. That's additional. With respect to labor costs, will employees be given an average 3.2% raise as of January 1st? And if so, how will the FCH, how will Forts Colony compete with outside companies, especially in landscaping, who are once again offering raises of 10 to 15%? Note that Forts Colony has no employees. They're all RCS employees. An allowance for compensation is included in the budget, which is distributed to the employees of RCS by the management of RCS, not by Forts Colony. The 3.2% increase is consistent with compensation changes for large HOA survey locally. Forts Colony is not the lowest, nor is it the highest. RCS can determine how best to apportion the increase across their workforce. Can you provide comparative numbers for what Kings Mill, Governor's Land, and other large associations will have as their 2024 annual assessments? These are the numbers. Forts Colony is clearly the lowest, quite a bit lower than Governor's Land. At the time that we did this, we didn't have a response from Colonial Heritage. I don't know if we've gotten one yet. We here says no. So these are the numbers for the local HOAs. $2296 per year for Forts Colony, Kings Mill is $2,424, and Governor's Land is $3,800 a year. Now, let me ask this question. Kings Mill, when we talked with them last year, there's a general assessment, but in each of their subdivisions, each of their neighborhood associations has a second assessment. So this is only the overall assessment for Kings Mill, not the assessment that each of the residents is paying. So we're back to the key budget takeaways. We did have a significant increase in revenue this year for next year, projected. And we double-checked to make sure that that wasn't a blip on the radar, that this is something that we can expect to continue. The inflation rate is lower now than it has been in recent years, and projections are able to continue at a lower level. So the budget shortfall was a minimum, and our proposed assessment was $10 per quarter or 1.77%. So if you haven't written your question down already, we'll collect them. Good question. How is the $100,000 COVID money payback RCS to Forts Colony reflected in this budget? Since that is a question I can't give a great answer to because it has some legal implications. Sally?
It's in the rollover. So the budget, as Rick presented, does have a rollover that comes into next year, from this year into next year. And so that benefit is in this year, rolls into next year, and is budgeted to occur again, and is in the projections the finance committee put out for the next handful of years.
So it's fair to say then that it shows up as a surplus? It's a surplus from year to year. And actually, the rollover, if you hadn't seen the budget presentation as yet, the expected rollover is $198,000 from '23 to '24. Yeah, pardon, plus extra.
I have one more. Okay. The Western Gales people are pretty much understanding that we're getting shrubs. The question now becomes, the schedule is sometime late fall next year, but it's late. The concern is, as a capital reserve item, will there be annual money budgeted for the maintenance of probably a couple of new plants? It's not something like a building where you can project in five years, we'll go and paint it in 10 years, we gotta do something with the floor or something like that. So the question is, has the consideration been done so that there is annual maintenance money in the budget for those shrubs?
The answer is yes. It has been done. That's, I'm not prepared to give an answer, a detailed answer to that now. Drew, do you want to take it?
Thank you. We're looking at the initial installation of those shrubs, plus replacement for a relatively short period of time. Many shrubs that need replacement during that so-called initial shrub installation time has a reserve expense. Once we get through that period, it'll be an operational expense. So we need to plan for it in 2025's operational budget.
Other question?
Yes, so this summer, the pool hours were canceled for the morning swim in the one pool effective end of July, where you could swim at 6:45 in the morning. One of the reasons cited was money. And I just was wondering, did that get included in the budget so that that service would be occurring next year? Or are we not going to have those pool hours next year either?
Another question for Drew, I have.
Certainly. So money is very general response. It was really the optimization of our staff at that particular time and the number of users. And so we pulled that use over to the swim and tennis club. There are hours that made more sense for the general use and our lifeguarding. So it wasn't a matter that we didn't have the money in the budget to handle that time. It's just that the number of uses we had at that, at two pools, we thought it would be best to combine it at the end of the year into one pool. We're going into 2024 with the assumption that we'll start the year.
The answer was that the pool hours will be the same at both pools as they were in the beginning for 2024, as they were at the beginning of this past summer. Oh, and it was done for optimization of staff. The change was, I've done both for optimization of staff and in consideration of the number of actual swimmers. Any other questions?
I have a real problem as far as user fees. If I, as an individual or resident, wanted to rent this room, okay, say four hours, I would be charged $400. So it's $100 an hour. Okay. If another homeowner's, the homeowner's, and I say the pickle court, pickleball courts over there, okay? The pickleball club, they don't pay anything over there as far as they use that facility. I think there should be a user fee. And the same problem with this club here. I went through the talk of the colony, and there's 28 different clubs that use this facility, but pay nothing using this facility. Same way with the other facility down at West Park. The bocce ball, you pay nothing. I don't think that's fair. I think that we have to look at increasing revenue, not by raising our homeowner's fees, but by charging user fees. And so I think that the association has to start looking at, you know, using our facility, okay, and charging, and to see, I'm not saying I think it's orbiting now, but charging something to help offset the cost of 2% increase in fees. And the other issue I have also is this famous kayak platform that you're supposed to be building for $61,000. I talked to people about it. They had no idea that we were going to do that, or you all approve of the building. And I talked to a male and a half a dozen people, and they had no clue about it. And I would think that somewhere, you have to explore this boat on big projects, like a kayak, or like, you just talk about the pickleball courts, $100,000, and you build, well, you build it wherever the figures were broken out, and you put those barriers on. Its total cost was $100,000 for the pickleball courts, including the barriers, right? And a lot of people didn't know anything about that. And I can't use the pickleball courts because my doctor says I can't. But why? Why have to pay for those barriers? I think the pickleball people should pay for the barriers. User fees. And I think that the board should be looking at issues like them. So all that's with, you know, like I say, and that just causes me that we're providing facilities, and I think that the various organizations need to contribute, you know, to the cost and the maintenance of some of these particular operations. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Question? Okay, Roy? Did he leave? Oh, there he is. I'm going to turn this back over to you, Roy. We'll take your comments under advisement, and we appreciate them a lot. Thank you all for coming. A few of the board members will still be here after this meeting. If you have anything else that you'd like to talk to us about, that would be fine. And otherwise, thank you all. It's adjourned.